I'd like to call the meeting to order of the zoning board of appeals for November 12. Can we do a roll call, please?
Mr. Crockett?
Here.
Mr. Mercosso?
Here.
Mr. Stanhope?
Here.
Mr. Richard?
Here.
Mr. Dillon? Mr. Stark? Mr. Lloydell?
Well, we are missing some members this evening. The alternate members will be voting. Please join me in pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under the right of individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Crockett?
Yes?
Where there is no, the co-chairmen are not here tonight, the first order of business would be to elect a chairman for the evening amongst the members that are present. So someone needs to nominate an individual and then vote for him. I nominate Mr. Crockett.
Let me second it. All in favor? unanimous?
Great.
If anyone's here for appeal 2537 tonight, which is the last appeal on your agenda, that has been tabled, so we will not be hearing that appeal this evening. Can I have the approval of the minutes, please?
Excuse me, that's 19 Vesper Street.
I'm sorry. Yes, 19 Vesper Street.
I move to approve the minutes of the last minute.
And we are approving minutes for August and September this evening.
I move to approve both meetings. Second.
All those in favor? We have appeal number 2535, special exception appeal by Warren and Denise Hamilton, 167 Two-Rod Road, assessors map R-32, parcel 19, for home occupation. Who do we have? Please take the podium and introduce your name and address for us.
Denise Hamilton, 167 Two-Rod Road, Scarborough.
Warren Hamilton, 167 Two-Rod Road, Scarborough.
Thank you. And please state what you're here for this evening.
We're here to request a special exception for in-home occupation of a sign business creating motor vehicle decals, signs, banners.
Okay. Great. And we have your paperwork here.
Do we need to go over the normal appeal procedures?
Yep.
I got a question. So those are the only three things you're gonna do? You're not gonna put signs out for businesses, like the Seaco signs or Burr and those? Are you gonna do that? Or is it just gonna do those three things?
No, we'll do anything. We'll be doing, like you said, banners, signs, vehicle graphics.
Okay.
And any installation will be contracted by someone else. We contract that out.
We have two sets of standards that we need to look at for you this evening. We have the standards for special exception and the standards for home occupation, so we'll have two sets of guidelines. What I'd like to do is just read off, and you can just read your answers. The proposed use will not create unsanitary, unhealthy conditions by reason of sewage disposal, emissions to the air or water, or other aspects of its design or operation. And if you could just read the answers that you have on your sheet that you sent in.
Okay. And our apologies if they're vague. I mean, we just didn't know how to fill them out.
That's fine.
But there'll be no unsanitary or unhelpful conditions created by having our sign shop in the area.
Okay. The proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to the existing or foreseeable traffic in its vicinity.
There will be no added traffic or pedestrian traffic than there already is on the road.
Thank you. The proposed use will not create public safety problems, which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood, or require a substantially greater degree of municipal fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood.
There will be no safety problems created or the need for added municipal fire and police protection.
Thank you. The proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion, or have adverse effect on water supplies.
No water is needed, and therefore will have no adverse effect on water supplies or any sedimentation or erosion issues.
Thank you. The proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity to other structures, and density of development.
Sign shop will be a nice added value to the other businesses in the area.
Thank you. And is your property located in Shoreland Zone?
No.
Okay. If it was located in the Shoreland Zone, as depicted on the town Scarborough's official Shoreland zoning map, the proposed use will comply with all the requirements of the town of Scarborough Shoreland zoning ordinances, and you've already stated that it's not. And you have sufficient applicant title, right, and interest in the site of the proposed use to carry out the proposed use?
We own the existing land and home.
Okay. The applicant has the technical and financial ability to meet the standards of this section and to comply with any conditions imposed by the Board of Appeals pursuant to the subsection five of this section.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Got one more there?
One more.
Oh, did I miss one?
Yes.
Aye.
Yep.
The proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to the generation of noise and hours of operation.
There should be no added noise, no matter what time of the day it is.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Longstaff?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, what would the hours of operation be for your business?
Eight to five, probably.
Okay. We would wanna have something specific, so if you can give us what you feel would be it.
Eight to five, five days a week, Sunday through Friday.
And any comments from you, or?
I received no comments, no written comments on this appeal.
Okay. And any staff comments?
Well, the only staff comment I have is that we now need to turn to the performance standards for home occupations under section nine V in the ordinance.
Thank you.
There are 12 different criteria that we gotta make sure that this complies with.
Okay. And the applicant has the?
I forwarded this section to the applicant. I believe they're prepared to answer your questions on these.
We just don't have their answers.
They're not part of the application.
Okay. Thank you. We have some more questions for you.
Sure.
The occupation or profession shall be carried on wholly within the principal building or within a building accessory thereto.
Yes, it'll be in our breezeway, and there's an unfinished basement below the breezeway.
Okay. And the breezeway is all the usage you need for this business?
Yes.
Okay. A home occupation shall be clearly incidental and secondary to use of the dwelling unit for residential purposes.
Yes.
Okay. No more than one person who is not a resident of the dwelling unit shall be employed in the home occupation.
There'll be no others.
Well, it'll be us.
Okay. Exterior signage shall be permitted in accordance with the home occupation sign provisions under section 12 sign regulation subsection E. You know that you can't have a sign, you just have to comply within the town's ordinances and guidelines.
Correct.
You just can't make it yourself, though.
Right, yeah, we'll just find someone to make it.
I was gonna say, that must be a new one, 'cause I didn't hear that one. There shall, probably less cost for you, though. There shall be no exterior display, no exterior storage of materials, and no other exterior indication of the home occupation or variation from the residential character of the principal building except expressly permitted by the district regulations of this ordinance. This prohibition shall not apply to the storage of lobster traps. So you're not doing lobster traps.
No.
You don't need to worry about that. No nuisance shall be generated, including but not necessarily, limited to offensive noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, heat, or glare.
No.
None of it.
The traffic generated by such home occupation shall not increase the volume of traffic so as to create a traffic hazard or disturb the residential character of the immediate neighborhood.
No.
None whatsoever.
In addition to the off-street parking provided to meet the normal requirements of the dwelling, adequate off-street parking shall be provided for the vehicles of each employee and during, and the vehicles of maximum number of users or customers the home occupation may attract during peak hours of operation.
You have empty parking.
Okay. There's just the two of you, right?
Yeah.
The home occupation may utilize not more than 20% of the dwelling unit floor area, provided that for the purpose of this calculation unfinished basement and attic spaces are not included. Now, you said you have some space in the basement, and that's not to be included per this?
It's not finished space?
Correct.
You'd be utilizing that just for storage and things like that?
Correct.
And what percentage of the home is the breezeway within that 20%?
Oh, yes. It's, what, maybe 10?
10 to 15 at the very most.
Yeah. Probably about 100.
Probably not even 15.
We'll check that on the building permit application for the home occupation when we do that C.L. inspections.
Okay. And you addressed the unfinished attic or basement spaces. Space within an accessory building totaling not more than 1,000 square feet of floor area.
Theirs is in their house, correct? It's not an accessory building.
Correct. There's no accessory building.
Okay. Home occupations may include retail sales, subject to the following limitations. Are you doing any? I would assume that this is considered a retail sale.
Correct.
You're not gonna be just doing wholesale signage?
Correct.
Okay. The total area devoted to retail sales is limited to 400 square feet and must be fully enclosed within the building, which it sounds like it will be.
Correct.
It's not an open breezeway.
No.
No.
It'd be hard to do that in the winter.
Yeah.
The sale of products is limited to products and articles produced, assembled, or processed on the premises, seafood caught or harvested off the premises by persons who reside in the dwelling unit or by one employee permitted under paragraph three above.
That's my man.
That's confusing.
Confusing, yes, it is. The sale of the products is limited to products and articles produced, assembled, or processed on the premises.
Yes.
You're making all the signs on premises. You're not buying signs elsewhere.
Correct. No, we're making them.
The, Mr. Chairman, the last two criteria, there's no point in going that.
More of fisherman lobsterman and motor vehicle repairs.
No. I don't think that pertains to what you're doing.
All right. With that being said?
You wanna?
Open it up for public hearing? That's what I was looking for. Like to open it up for public hearing at this time? Anyone that would like to speak on this appeal? Seeing no one present, like to close the public hearing? Like to open it up to questions of the board? Is anybody having questions for the applicant?
So it's retail, so people will be coming there to buy product.
They, oh, sorry.
Sorry. The majority of our stuff that we make is shipped by UPS to customers, and half of my time probably is spent doing design work at the computer for our shop in North Carolina. So it'd be very.
So will you be bringing the signs to the UPS distribution?
Correct, yes.
A UPS truck won't be coming to your place? And then, you said the proposed use will be compatible with the existing uses in the neighborhood, and you answered the sign shop will be nice, a nice added value to the other businesses in the area.
We're a few houses down from Beach Ridge Motor Speedway.
It was one of our customers from the past.
Which is one of our customers from the past, when we used to live here, and also with.
Race car builder, two houses down that builds race cars that we supply graphics for.
That's what you mean by other businesses in the area?
Correct.
If I remember the area accurately, there's probably about five or so businesses, probably right within that vicinity, there are probably home businesses.
Right. It's a transitional area that's, we're trying to transition to light industrial, however, because it's an overlay for RF, they can continue to have it as a residence as long as they maintain that residence. If they wish to ever convert to solely business, they can do so by letter to the planning and codes department, and then at that point the residential use would cease. That's not what they're doing, but that's why there are some other businesses in the area, and that's kind of the use that seems to be growing in that section of town.
Any other questions, Mr. Mercosso?
So there won't be any ladders for trucks or all that? Everything's gonna be inside and?
Everything will be inside.
Decals and that?
Everything would be inside.
One thing I did wanna do, which you've already addressed, is the hours of operation. Thank you for that. Now, you said that the design work is gonna be done in North Carolina and?
No, I do the design work here for our shop in North Carolina.
Okay, so you have another shop?
Yes.
Down there? Okay. But they're not gonna be making the stuff and sending it?
No, no. They make stuff down there for customers down there, and I just do the design work at the computer and email it to them.
Okay. On occasion of traffic, I mean, it's kind of a busy area over there anyway. What do you foresee for people that would actually come to the house if you ever had it?
Maybe one or two cars.
Two a week, maybe, at the most.
I mean, you know, it's.
There would be less traffic if I was driving to work every day to a job, you know?
Okay.
That would create more traffic on us.
All right. Are there any other questions? Do we have any letters or anything from the community on this? Close the questions for the board?
Entertain a motion at this point.
Okay. Anybody would like to make a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve these folks for their in-home business.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Unanimous? I did fail to mention before the meeting, I apologize for that, where there is four members, if it's two-two split and it's a tie, if anybody does not wanna hear, have your appeal here tonight, that would consider as denied if we had a two-two split, correct?
A tie equals a failure.
Okay. Just wanted to point that out for members. Sorry, I pointed that out beforehand for you. You folks are all set?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, just here. Sorry. We had to make, that's what we were doing. Your name.
19 Vesper Street.
Yes. Sorry. That's what we were paying for. We didn't have those minutes.
I was gonna say, it looks different.
Yeah, that's kinda what it looks like.
Yeah. Hold on to your appeal for the one that was tabled this evening. Hold that in your package.
I can pass it down. You don't have it. I mean, if you want to, you can, but.
If you get out of your seat, we can't talk.
Thank you.
You good?
All right.
Appeal number 2415, an extension by Donald and Susan Hamill, or Hamel, I'm sorry, 3 Bay Street, assessors map U-23, parcel 59, requesting a one-time six-month extension of the practical difficulty variance they received from the zoning board of appeals on May 28, 2014. Mr. Fisher, how are you?
Pretty much sums it up.
Please state your name and?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Jim Fisher with Northeast Civil Solutions here this evening representing Ms. and Mrs. Hamel for that very request. For those of you who were on the board at that point, this was back in May of this, May 28th of this past year, we received unanimous approval for a practical difficulty variance for the Hamels to be able to rebuild a home that they have at 3 Bay Street. There were no particular issues, and we did receive a five to zero vote. Unfortunately, what happened, and this is not unusual in the beach areas where the town requests that there be no major construction, demolition, or construction from Memorial Day through Labor Day, and in some cases well into the middle of September, and then obviously, given the winter months, it gets a little challenging to build some houses, although not impossible during that period. Point was that the Hamels had contracted with their G.C. to begin work ostensibly in October, this past month, and about a month ago, they received notes, notice from their G.C. that he was not, well, for whatever reason, they weren't gonna be able to start until either December or even early January. That would put us past the six-month period of the validity of the variance. Town regulations does allow for a one-time extension for up to six months. The Hamels are prepared to go forward with it. They don't really have much of a choice when their G.C. said that they'd have to delay a little bit, so hopefully that's gonna be starting with the building permit either next month or in January. Nevertheless, we do need to get the approved extension if we can. It's only a one-time extension, and they understand that, so toward that end, they will end up building here coming up within the next couple of months, and certainly hopefully finish by the time the year rolls around. So we're just asking for a simple extension.
I guess my only thing is, I don't know if we need to, where half of the members probably didn't vote, if you could just give kind of a brief synopsis?
Sure.
I know you probably don't have your whole plan here and everything.
I usually come prepared with a brand-new project, but in this case, essentially what it is, it's a single-family residential cottage that was built in the 1920s. The cottage was built as a seasonal entity. The foundation was not particularly good. It was just kind of a single block and stone foundation. There's some deterioration in the cottage. The Hamels have owned it for quite a while, have used it as a summer rental, or as a summer, well, partial rental, but they also lived there a portion of the time. They're now, just coincidentally, actually looking to move into this as their permanent residence. This is on Bay Street, down off of East Grand, down off of Pine Point, and the house that they're proposing to build is actually slightly smaller than the existing one, and it makes the nonconformity of the lot, or of the lot in which the house is located, less nonconforming than it is right now. The lot is so small that they barely have a building envelope, and the house, a portion of the house is in that envelope, a portion of it is outside. We're actually moving it further away from one of the sides and further back from the road to make it less nonconforming all the way around the other side and the rear. We're not an issue anyway. The board heard that argument and agreed that there was no issue as far as that's concerned, and it was a unanimous five to zero vote to approve the practical difficulty variance. Again, here this evening, we're just asking for the one-time allowed extension for that so that they can build and do whatever they need to all the way up through this coming May.
Mr. Longstaff, are there any comments from your staff, or you?
No, only to remind the board that, as Mr. Fisher has stated, section 4K of the ordinance authorizes the board to approve a one-time six-month extension on any approval or permit issued by them. So it is, it is something that you can do for good cause.
In section K, provisions of expiration, all permits and approval issued pursuant to the ordinance shall expire if the construction of the building or structure or commencement of use has not begun within six months of the date of which the permit or approval was issued. Upon good cause, the person aboard issuing the original permit or approval may extend its effectiveness for an additional six months.
That's what Mr. Longstaff is referring to. Do we need to open it up for public hearing where this has already been approved?
I think, I think any questions from the board at this time?
Okay.
And if none, then I would entertain, oh, open it up for any comment from the public.
Do we need, I didn't know if that?
Yeah, I think you can.
Okay.
If there's anyone here that has any comment, I think you can.
Okay. 'Cause I know we're really not voting on it. Like to open it up to public hearing if anybody would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing. Like to open it up for comments from the board or a motion to extend?
I think it's pretty cut and dry, and we have the ability to give them six months, so I make a motion that we approve it.
Don't mind me asking, just per question of that, what was the major thing that pushed it back?
It pushed it back? Oh, you mean because they couldn't meet their deadline?
Right.
They had contracted with a general contractor who had expected to start work typically in October, which was fine, and they received word right at the end of September from the general contractor that he still was able to do the house, but he wasn't able to get his crews together until sometime in early December. That's not normally an issue, except that November 28th is the deadline by which something has to be done there, and that would have pushed us outside of the realm of applicability, so we're here a month earlier to just ask for that.
Thank you. Mr. Mercosso, you have a motion. Is there a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor? Unanimous?
Thanks for your time.
All set? Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
No, not on this one.
That one will just be noted in a minute.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Moving on to appeal 2536, a special exception appeal by the South Coast Community Church, 368 Gorham Road, assessors map R-19, parcel 21, modification to previous appeal, and I'd just like to note, I don't go there as a member, but my daughter does practice there for her cheering, so, but that doesn't affect me in any way for making a decision. Like to go over the standards for a special exception?
I've gotta state his name, please.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. Would you please state your name and?
My name's Peter Beagle. I'm with Land Design Solutions, and I'm here representing South Coast Community Church tonight.
Thank you. Now we can go over the standards for special exceptions.
Sorry, sir.
And do you have your responses right with you?
Yes, I do.
I think first, maybe, just have to explain the project.
Yes. Yes, explain your project and what you're doing for the board, please.
The church is a special exception in the RF zone, and they are proposing, so every time something, they wanna change something, they need to come back to you folks. They would like, they currently have a parcel of 16.4 acres, and they would like to sell a portion of that, bringing the size of the church and their parcel to five acres. That five acres encompasses all their parking, their stormwater buffer, nothing will be, they will not be creating nonconformity in any way. It's simply getting rid of a portion of their property that, right now, is just church-retained land. When they, the last time they were here, in 2006, when they were here for a subdivision, they developed the subdivision and they retained a certain amount of land, thinking they might have a conference center, there might be, there was a list of things that potentially they were thinking. Their current thought is that financially it would benefit them to sell that property and just keep the church where it is. They don't see that they would expand the church, given the geometry and the configuration of the existing church, that the expansion just would not work for them. So they would like to divest themselves of the property for financial reasons and retain the five acres that encompasses everything that you, if you went to church there, everything that you would see.
Now, do we need any more information from the applicant about the intent of the sale or anything, or do we not even need to get into that?
No. All you're, all you're trying to decide as a board is the change that he's just described. Is that in any way, is that in any way in conflict of the criteria that you look at for granting a special exception? Almost like you're hearing this for the first time, but you don't have to review all of the details of the subdivision because that's not yours to decide on. That's a planning board review that they'll be going for once they get, if they get approval from the zoning board. So your job is to look at those special exception, it's not a special, yes, it is a special exception. And just to clarify, it's not the church, actually, that?
It's daycare.
It's the daycare, the nursery school that is an adjunct use to the church. The church is actually, or a place of worship, is actually a permitted use in the rural farm district. But the adjunct use, being the nursery school, is the one that triggers the special exception, and so that's, that's why they're here, because they do intend to continue the nursery schools.
No. No, that hasn't been in existence for years, and we don't intend to.
So the nursery school is no longer a use of the facility?
No, sir. No, just mainly surely try to consider it.
Okay. I don't know if that's an adjunct use or not. So is there any plan to reestablish a nursery school in the future?
You should come up and state it.
Okay.
You do have the rooms available for it, but you're just not, don't have any, could you just come up to the podium and state your name and where you're from, please?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Travis Bush, pastor, South Coast Community Church.
Okay. 'Cause I know, I know the facility, so there are rooms and everything available to do it, but you just have no plans to do it.
Correct.
We've, we've gone back and forth on that. My wife actually entertained the idea three years ago, and then again, two years ago. And at this time, just like with expanding the church in the foreseeable future, we have no plans to continue that at all. So, yeah.
Does that change the appeal at all?
Well, if that is made clear earlier on, we wouldn't have had to be here tonight for this.
Well-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry for that.
Yeah.
It was not made known that the nursery school wasn't operating.
Yeah, sorry, we, yeah.
Had no information on that, so.
Keep, keep in mind, if you do say that the nursing, nursery school is not going to operate, and it is not operating, you would not be able to do it unless you came back before us and had a brand new appeal.
You would simply have to come back for that special exception, should you ever-
If you ever wanted to. We just want to make sure you know that it's on the table.
Since we're here, we could go ahead and pursue that, I guess, and that way it's on the table for future use.
If nothing else changes, you at least have that.
Correct.
You have that approval on file.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Since you're here, you might.
Yeah, and he's great, he's, he's good, so we'll just continue.
Because we could limit that. If we, if we decided that you weren't going to do it and we canceled this, you could not have a nursery school going forward at all, and if you wanted to. It's just, it's keeping that option open to you.
Well, to be clear, to be clear, I just want to clarify. The way you just said that, you can always come back for a special exception to operate a nursery school.
I don't want to bug you guys.
You'd have to come back before us. You'd have to come back to do that.
Yeah.
Right. I don't want to bug you guys anymore than we have to, so we'll, we'll continue and-
Okay.
The worst, the worst thing that can happen is the board denies your special exception for the nursery school, which you're not running anyway.
Right. And we can still-
That's the worst thing that can happen. Your church can still go forward, so.
Very good.
Okay?
Great, thank you.
Okay. So you're just reviewing the special exception criteria?
Based upon the nursery school.
Based upon the nursery.
Because if it, if we weren't reviewing that, we wouldn't even have to be here.
Exactly.
Okay. Everybody clear?
No. Why did the planning board send this down to us?
The planning board didn't send it to us.
Well, before they could approve it, they had to come to zoning board.
They have to get approval for the use, the adjunct use.
Adjunct uses.
If they were operating a nursery school, they would have to come for permission to have that special exception adjunct use approved by the zoning board before then they could continue to go through their approval with the, with the planning board on the subdivision.
A place of worship is permitted. It's because they have that other, even though they're not using it, it was originally listed that they had that when the appeal was approved originally.
So we're going to approve something that they're not using?
Well, again, get with me on this. They're here, they're not currently operating a nursery school, and they've not operated, we're just learning tonight, they've not, not operated a nursery school for a few years. However, by continuing with this special exception appeal, should it be approved, it leaves the option open for them to operate a nursery school in the future as long as nothing else changes within the site, like they peel off another acre of the site for some other use, or they discontinue the church and decide to just operate a nursery school, or something of that nature.
Well, how long does-
So as long as nothing changes, that use will run with the land.
How long does the seal stay in place if something's not being used? I thought it was one year.
No, as long as the, the approval runs with the land, okay?
The owner.
It, it stays in place as long as nothing changes.
Well, operation and non-operation is quite a bit of change, isn't it? If, if I, if you have a store or a business and it's stuck for a year, doesn't need to be, you know?
There's nothing that says they can't stop operating that and restart it, because it's a special exception, it's not a non-conforming use. You're thinking of a non-conforming use, which if ceases for more than one year, it cannot be resumed.
Okay, so non-conforming, is that one year?
This is not non-conforming, this is a special exception permitted by the Zoning Board of Appeals. They could have stopped this use, and if they'd have kept the same amount of land and hadn't gone through the subdivision process or started through the subdivision process, we wouldn't be hearing this tonight.
But I, I think where the applicant said just to go ahead with it, if we don't go ahead with it the way it is, they would have to come back before us as a new appeal if they decided to start the nursing school again.
Okay, let's go ahead, move forward.
Okay.
As confusing as it is.
It is confusing.
I just don't want to limit them, they're already here, and it's already approved on record, so. Did you have a question?
I was thinking, and we're all clear on that, because I heard something different on the podium, that you may just not want to push that aside and, and not be heard on, on the nursery school. Is that true, or no, you do want to?
No, I, and I think, right, I think we would like to move forward and just keep things going as they are. I, I think the, the miscommunication, if you will, since we'd always been a, a special exception, nobody was really separating those uses, and it was just, okay, you want to, you're going to the planning board, well, since you've been a special exception, you need to go back to the Zoning Board of Appeals and get that taken care of before you move on. And we never really got down into, okay, exactly why was that a special exception? And, and what were those uses? It was just, we had been, in the last few times they'd been here, they were a special exception, so, okay, this is what you've got to do, go through steps A, B, and C. So, here we, here we are. Right, so this would keep the options open, should.
Okay. Like to go through the standards for special exception?
Yes.
The proposed use will not create unsanitary or unhealthy conditions by reason of sewage, disposal, emissions to the air, water, or other aspects of its design or operation.
We will have no additional impacts.
The proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to existing or foreseeable traffic in its vicinity.
The church's traffic will not change.
The proposed use will not create public safety problems, which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood, or require a substantially greater degree of municipal fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood.
Correct.
The proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion, or have an adverse effect on water supplies.
That is correct. No change.
The proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity of other structures, and density of development.
Correct, there are no changes to the site or structures.
And it's not located in the shoreline zone?
Correct.
Okay. The applicant has sufficient right, title, or interest in the site of the proposed use to be able to carry out the proposed use.
Yes, we supplied a deed of ownership.
The applicant has sufficient, has technical and financial ability to meet the standards of this section and to comply with any conditions imposed by the Board of Appeals pursuant to subsection five of this section.
Correct.
The proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to generation of noise and hours of operation.
Again, there will be no changes.
What are the hours of operation generally? You're generally there till five, aside from events and things.
Generally, yes.
I think our latest that's ever opened is probably for the cheering, which I think ends at like seven or eight.
Yeah, and we occasionally have a deacon meeting, one Wednesday night a month, that'll go till eight thirty, nine o'clock, one AM, wow, whenever. No, just, just kidding, we've limited it to two hours now. But, and then Sunday mornings, obviously, from, first people start arriving eight thirty, and then we're out of there by noon.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if we could kind of approach this from, again, the place of worship is a permitted use.
Right.
And really, the responses have been all about the church, but what we're really hearing is the non-operating nursery school. When the nursery school was operating, was it a five-day-a-week school?
Or if you ever did operate it again?
If you were going to operate it again, yeah.
It, it was eight years ago, the last time that operated. Yes, it was, it was like eight AM to three. It's Monday through Friday.
Rough, does anyone remember roughly how many, what the capacity of this, the uh-
I believe it was limited to twenty.
Okay.
Twenty, twenty children.
So that's kind of, just, I just want the board to be aware of the scope of, of what the adjunct use was. You know, it wasn't two hundred students or two hundred kids.
Twenty, it was limited to twenty.
You know, it's a big difference between that capacity, and I believe there are other limitations that are placed on nursery schools anyway by the state and so on and so forth.
Right. And just to cover other things for the church, they're not excluded from having other groups or anything there today.
No, as long as it's, it's a church function or, you know, a community function.
Community event.
Yes.
Just want to make sure I cover all the bases for you.
So when, when you say church in here, we can strike church out and say daycare?
It really should be, yeah, if we, if we can substitute church.
So the daycare operation is going to remain constant?
It's nursery, it's nursery school.
Yes.
Has not.
Right.
Now, you got me all messed up, no?
And all the answers you answered would be the same if the nursery school was operating?
And we just want to, we want to go on record as making sure we've made that distinction. That's, it's a fine point, but nonetheless, it has to be clarified.
That's what we're here for, for that, so we might as well make sure. Okay. I'd like to open it up for public hearing, if anybody wishes to speak on the matter? A lot of people here, but no one wants to speak. Okay, just take the podium, do your name and address, please.
My name's Mark Collins. I live at Seven Pemmerack Lane, which is Lot Four of this subdivision, church owns, own property. So I guess, I'm just confused why I'm here, because I felt that the reason why we're coming to the zoning committee meeting was also to discuss the property that they want to sell, which will affect us.
No, that's planning board.
So that's just planning board.
That's planning board.
Okay.
We're not here to hear the, we're not, we're not taking the subdivision as an appeal that's not our-
Just to maintain the existing piece of property which we like.
Right, right. Again, it, it's a, it's a point of clarification and a minor one. The only change is, I understand it, and correct me if I'm misstating it, but based on the application in front of us, the only change is that they had a parcel this big with the church and the nursery school on it, and now they have a parcel that's this big with the church and the nursery school on it. It still contains all of their parking, all of their infrastructure. It was just this spare land, for lack of a better term, that they're now dividing into additional house lots.
And the planning board would have to approve any subdivision?
The planning board would go through the subdivision review process, would require any, they review it, make sure it met their requirements, and, and they would put any conditions on that subdivision that they felt were necessary, such as stormwater, you know, stormwater infrastructure, additional turnouts, fire suppression, any, any of those elements that they look at, lot size, lot configuration, those, those issues, buffering, that would all be planning board. We're only here tonight to determine, is that change, reducing that parcel from sixteen acres to five acres, is that in any way affect or impact the special exception adjunct use of a nursery school? Which used to be there.
It used to be there, but it's got that.
So you can, you can definitely come before the-
Which can be there again.
Oh, I was here on the seventeenth, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You have the right to voice your opinion at that, but really, we don't even really need to be here, but we're just doing the formality.
We get the letter, so we're doing our formalities. Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak in public hearing? Seeing that there's none, I'd like to close the public hearing, open it up for questions from the board or a motion? Yes?
Where is this non-existing daycare located on the map here?
In the church building.
It's in the church building?
Yes.
Yeah, it's part of it. Mr. Mercisso, I'm familiar with the building, they, they have rooms that they would have had, like little, that would have been classrooms down a hall corridor, so, as, as most of your churches do these days. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I think it's been all the criteria, I think, I make a motion to approve.
Second. With the exception of the daycare, if it was to restart, we're approving it based upon that, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have all this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. A second?
Second.
Second? All of them in favor? Opposed? Three to one passes?
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry for the confusion.
And only because I'm pretty confused by the whole thing.
I don't think you're the only one, Mr. Mercisso.
Thank you.
Well, we, I will say, I really appreciate you doing what you do for the cheerleading squad. It's the only place we have to practice in town, so we deeply appreciate your support.
We enjoy being a part of the community.
Thank you.
And they, they did go to the planning board, they were asked all those questions, so they got to still go to the planning board for this whole-
That's right.
Did I put yes on my last? Yes. Oh, we didn't do that, so the second one, we didn't do, because we didn't have to vote on that, so.
Dan, can you put him up? I'm trying to get the next one. Can you put yes next to your, you can add.
Okay. No, pass this one. Oh, we didn't put yes on that one, I was-
I didn't do that, but I put the other one.
I'm Karen, by the way.
How are you on mic? Nice to meet you. You, that, did you come this way?
Yeah, it's coming.
There we go. There we go.
Correct. It's no longer-
They do, that's not true. They do.
Are we missing one here that we didn't sign?
No, you didn't have to sign the second one.
The second one we didn't have to approve.
That's going to be recorded in the-
Folks, we're still in session.
It's going to be recorded in a minute.
All right. Thank you.
That's okay.
Oh, is that all right? Okay, anyways.
Mr. Longstaff, do you have any other questions or information for us?
Uh, no, did I, did I remember to forward to you folks, there's some training opportunities through the main municipal association. I think I emailed, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that everyone got that and was aware of that, if they were interested, we can help you get there and back with mileage and whatnot.
Did everybody get that? I remember seeing it, so.
I'll relook at that.
Mr. Mercisso?
I'd like to express my gratitude by the emails, clarifica, not clarifications, but guidance that you give us to, to go a little bit further, knowing that I'm not a, in the zoning business professionally, but a layman, so to speak. It helps me kind of ask crazy questions, I guess.
Oh, well, you're welcome, and it's not easy, it's not something that comes naturally to any of us, and, and the only reason I can help you is because I deal with it all day long, every day.
Right, right.
Otherwise, I'd be just as confused and still am sometimes.
And I noticed that, the one I wanted to have the home office, you asked to have the, the plot drawings and all that, and I didn't see any of it, so.
It's in the building permit application.
Because that kind of helps me to kind of see where it is, type of thing.
The, the tricky part about the home occupation is that you, as a special exception, you're reviewing the special exception criteria, but the performance standards are really things that they have to do in order to stay in the good graces of the ordinance. So if somebody steps out of bounds and all of a sudden their home occupation takes over their entire structure and we find out about it, we can go back to the performance standards and say, you're not, you're not eating those.
So you see that it's taken, you see that twenty percent is met before it comes to us?
Yeah, exactly. It, it's a little disjointed because there are specific performance standards that pertain to home occupations as well as several other uses in the performance section. They may fall under special exception or not. This one's kind of a hybrid because it has those four or five general criteria that you look at, plus a whole bunch of other performance standards that aren't necessarily yours to regulate, they're mine to regulate, but I feel like it's a good question and answer session for you to go down through those, and it gives the applicant a chance to explain what their project is a little, a little bit more, especially when the information they provided is a little bit thin. I mean, they, they filled out the application and they had answered the questions, but it was a little thin, so it gave, it gave you a chance to get a little bit under, better understanding of what it was they were proposing to do.
And why does something so simple as a six-month extension have to come to us?
It's a great point, and I would love to see somebody propose an amendment to-
Well, I mean, I think looking at this, I call it the beach, the Pine Point in like Pagan's Beach, fifteen-foot setback, we always approve it, because if we're going to tear it down and make it something better, that the ordinance is supposed to pick that up so it doesn't come on our-
Right.
-table.
The six-month extension is, is something that, I, I feel like when you guys make a, a decision, and when you decide on something and you approve it, it's, that approval should be good for, I think, a minimum of a year.
Yeah.
I think six months is-
Especially up here in Maine with the weather. Especially after a rain with the weather.
Well, for a number of reasons, not the least of which is that probably well over fifty percent of the appeals that you have before you come from the beach communities. Two of the beach communities sort of have prohibitions on summer construction. Um, they're not ours to, no, not prohibitions that we enforce, but their, their association rules don't let them do it. So, if they don't meet that window, they've missed a whole six months of construction season, and, and you're only approving the thing for six months. It makes no sense to me. So, I, I really think that an amendment-
So, do we make a motion? Can I make a motion?
Well, I think we-
What do we do?
I think we, when we go through these, these changes to, um, the beach communities, we should also look, we've got a whole list of, of ordinance amendments that we're working on.
Do we put that on it?
I think it's already there, actually.
Good, thank you.
And I'll make sure that I, I reiterate that to the town planner when we go through that.
Yeah, because-
It, it, to me, a, a minimum, and I mean, if you guys think it should be longer, say so, but I think a minimum of a year on your decision is reasonable. I don't think it should be for-
I think that's very reasonable.
You know, I don't think five years is reasonable either, but I think a year is reasonable. And then, yeah, if there's an extension to be had, make it a six-month extension approvable by town staff.
Right.
I think is reasonable, if it meets, you know, if it's good cause. I think we can-
Right, right.
I think we can exercise judgment in, in deciding if it's good cause or not.
Exactly.
Um, it, I, I agree. I don't think that those are, those extensions. But it does say in the ordinance, by the, by the, uh, by the person or Board issuing the original permit, and that's why it comes back to you. So, we may have to amend that language as well, if that was your wish. Um, so, I would entertain, yeah, I mean, send me emails or Dan Bacon, uh, send emails or-
You want to as chairman of this meeting here?
My tenure is over. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Longstaff, for your assistance this evening.
I need, um, Mr. Mises to correct this, his answer on this here. He did not go yes.
Oh, that's right.
Please.
You were a no.
That's right.
And I, I look forward to our chair and co-chair coming back next month.
Next month will be our annual December Christmas meeting.
Hopefully, I didn't stumble through this too much.
Hopefully, I'll be here and exchange gifts.
But what we, um, what we approved, I will have to have you sign.
Okay.
Um, when I get the form, and I'll just send you an email.
Yeah, you'll actually have to do the, the official signatures on the-
Okay.
Do I have to turn in my resignation at the end of the meeting, when, like, we did, we elected me at the beginning of the meeting?
Why don't you hold on to it? Maybe you'll have to do it next month.
No, I think, I think that automatically expires when the meeting is, is adjourned.
All right, just making sure.